The May 2017 Meeting of the City of Scranton Zoning Hearing Board will now come into order. Will the Secretary please take role?
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Gattens?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Here.
Chairman O'Neil?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like you to leave to the flag of United States of America and to rule over the country as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of a hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with the testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during the thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by the board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization accordance with 111I of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek a special exemption. Remarks, anybody? And Jack, you put all the postings up?
Yeah, Jack Sweeney, zoning officer for the city of Scranton, Tucson. We swear that I posted the following premises with the notice of zoning hearing for tonight's meeting. 1611 Prospect Avenue, 111 Prospect Avenue, South Main Avenue from Cornell to Amherst Streets, and 802 Music Street. The postings were put up on May 2nd, 2017.
Call the first case.
First case, Henry Mendoza, 1611 Prospect.
Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Joe Tirana. My brother Angelo and I are proud to represent Mr. Henry Mendoza, and he may be giving testimony, so perhaps he should be sworn.
You want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your name and address, please.
Your name and address, please?
Henry Mendoza, 210 Cranton Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1855.
If I may, Mr. Mendoza has filed an application for a waiver. He purchased a property at 1611 Prospect Avenue in the south side section of Scranton. Mr. Mendoza knew at the time there were three units there, and that he would require five parking spaces. Mr. Mendoza is not an absentee or out-of-town landlord. He is literally preparing one of the apartments for his fourteen-year-old daughter and his daughter's mother, and the other-
I have a question before you go any further. Is it, you have three spaces or four? Is that two-
We have four, and we were looking for one more.
Okay, because you had said three.
We were looking for a variance. I'm sorry?
I believe you had said three.
No, I meant three units. Units, we have units, they said. Yes, sir. And as I said, one of the units would be lived in by the mother of his child and his fourteen-year-old daughter. There's only one car in that family. The other two units will be rented out. He purchased the property actually from a foreclosure, as I said, and I'm sorry to say, it's a situation that you guys hear a lot here at the zoning board. The property literally sat vacant for two years, was rundown. The bank owned it. Mr. Mendoza purchased it wanting to have a safe and secure place for his daughter and to find a way to finance that, including putting together the apartments. And unfortunately, because it sat vacant with the bank's ownership, the bank didn't keep up the ownership. From what, as far as we know, at least, there's been vacancies for at least a year. But because it was in the bank's hands, no landlord kept it up. No landlord kept up the requirements of your ordinances. I do not believe, and you have the four parking spots on the map that he currently has, as I said, we're only looking for one more. And in addition to that, as I said, Mr. Mendoza is the mother of his child, and his child will only have one unit, one car in that unit. And for all those reasons, I would ask that this board grant his application. I do want to apologize to the board and to the neighbors. I understand that Mr. Mendoza had some discussions with the neighbors, and they might be here today. Mr. Mendoza is, wants to help keep that neighborhood safe and secure. As I said, his fourteen-year-old daughter is going to be living there. And he wants to be a good neighbor, and he will do anything he can to make sure that happens. With that, I'll say, thank you.
I have a question. What was the address he gave that he lives at?
Yes, it's different than the one that's on the-
It's different than the application. Has you at 284 Cary Avenue?
Oh, because this, well, I put my business because that's the mailing address sometimes. I use my-
So this is your business address?
Yes.
Okay. The second question I have, the garage is in the back. I mean, for us to look in, the doors are closed. Are you able to park in the garage? Are they acceptable at this point to put a vehicle in, or do they need work on the inside? Because I'm looking at a building with the door.
Mr. Gattens, if I could show-
I don't know if anybody else is-
And this is just a normal, maybe you could, I feel for-
Yeah, maybe you can explain this, too, because this doesn't make any sense.
I think you've got the-
I don't know, bedroom one, bedroom two, and bedroom three. And the front of the application is also incomplete, doesn't say what he wants to do, but we don't, I don't know what that, I don't know why he did that.
No, I think this is John-
Oh, yeah, yeah. Can you answer from there?
You have to go back to the mic.
Yeah, well, it says bedroom one, bedroom two, and-
Let me, Ms. Newcomb, I can, let me go back to my question. Attorney? Okay. I understand where the garages are, and I appreciate that, but what I'm questioning is, when I went behind that building to look at the garages, the doors are down. Are you able at this time to park a vehicle in the garage, considering the condition of the house that he has to do repairs to it? What's the inside of them garages look like? Is he able to put cars in them garages?
Can you park in the garage?
Yeah, there's, yeah. I have two garages in the back.
And are those, and those are the base, and those are what you have depicted on the map?
Yes.
Yes. He says he-
Two cars in each garage.
I understand that it'll fit two cars, but my question is, is it structurally sound in there, or is it filled with, and I'll use the word junk for a better term, that you'll be able to put vehicles in that car, say, from day one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the other questions was, the application map has one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedrooms. Could you tell us how many bedrooms are in each of the three units?
I'm sorry, what, yes, sir, I think, as you know, it's hard to sort of depict going up and going wide at the same time on a two-dimensional thing, but I think what the house itself just depicts, if the units were stacked, the first one is a one-bedroom, the second floor is a two-bedroom, and the third floor is a three-bedroom.
Okay.
And then the parking spots, I guess, and they are, and they're inside the garage, is that correct?
Yes.
And there's no driveway over here?
No.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony? You could come up to the podium, please.
I have to swear everybody in, but whoever's going to speak, or, you know, if you're speaking on behalf of the neighbors, or-
If you don't mind, when you're at the table, to just address them with the microphone.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Randy Blau. I live at 1613 Prospect. It's right adjacent to 1611, and I've lived there my whole life. And the house, as Ben said, has been abandoned for a while. It's, none of us really thought it was going to ever be fixable. Like, people from the bank saying they're going to tear it down. It wasn't that bad a condition. So, Mr. Mendoza bought the house. I said, hey, I saw you bought the house over there. You know, I introduced myself, and I didn't know anything. I thought he bought it as a single family. So, I said, we have a good neighborhood here. I said, the cop lives at the end of the street. I had no idea it was a three-family. And then it was brought to my attention, and I said, make it a three-family. Now, there is not enough parking, and I could speak to the garage situation, because as I said, I live adjacent 1613. Now, when that property was abandoned-
One second. You said you lived there your whole life?
My whole life.
And it was not a three-unit beforehand?
It was a three-unit years ago. But from what I understand, if it's abandoned, and it was abandoned not for a year, it was probably abandoned for five years. It has to go back to, but anyhow, I'm not, I don't know the law. I'm just told it has a single family, and as far as the parking goes, when I lived there, that house was abandoned, rundown. The bank didn't do anything. The garage is in the back, the door was open, and the water was literally pouring in to the roof, just pouring into both these garages. Now, when the HUD took the house over, I believe, like I said, I see this every day, I live next door, they put a roof up. But I could show you the other side. I got a couple pictures of the other side of the garage that you can't see from the alley, and I don't see, like, I'm not an engineer, I can't prove it, but just, I don't see how that car, that garage, those garages would handle cars.
Well, they would have to bring everything up to standards, too.
You want to see the couple pictures I have?
Yeah, but that, you could bring them up, but before it was uncondemned, he has to fix everything that's dangerous, obviously, so.
Right, right, but I, right. And I mean, you know, and my-
Jack, is this house condemned?
No.
No. I didn't think so at all.
Chairman, Board, if you would-
Because it was abandoned. Jack, they still have to go through the whole inspector, inspection process as if they were condemned, right?
Correct.
So it is, it is a lengthy process, yeah.
And if the garage is unsafe, he could take it down and still use the spaces.
Yeah, but I just, I think-
He said-
The garage is unsafe, they could take it down and still use the spaces.
And this is when you can't see from the alley. This is from my yard. As you can see, it's, I mean, picture tells a thousand words.
Doesn't look though, like-
That's the garage, yeah.
Doesn't look like you can pull a car in there. It doesn't look structural, looks like it's-
Car, yeah. Yeah. And I don't know what's structural. As I said, I saw water pour into it, but that's, that's my two cents anyhow, for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
All right. May I ask some questions?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, sir, no, and I don't, I'm just wondering, you did say, though, that when the house was lived in, it was a three-unit, multi-unit rental, isn't that correct?
In the seventies and eighties, up until the nineties, yeah. And then whoever, the people that were in it last-
Well, I'll tell you that even the bills from when the bank had it still say that there's three, there were three units there.
Then, you got, I mean, if the bank says three units, I mean, well, I don't, I'm not the bank, so I can't argue that point.
And then if you could tell me, sir, when was the last time you were inside either one of the garages?
Probably a year ago. Probably a year ago, Jack.
Amen. A year ago?
A year, maybe a little more, and the garages looked the same. I don't know if there's any work done, but the garages looked the same. And I went in the alley, the garage door was actually open, and it was my kid, he was, you know, at that time, a little younger, you know, ten, eleven years old, where I said, I said, listen to this, right, and we heard the pigeons, right? Like, the garage was filled with pigeons, hundreds of pigeons, and the door was open. This is before Mr. Mendoza bought the property, the bank owned it. So I tried the door, and there was like two hundred pigeons in the garage.
And you haven't been in there since Mr. Mendoza?
No, no, I haven't.
And finally, are you happy that somebody's moving in and at least fixing the place up, and it's not abandoned anymore?
Yeah, initially, when I saw Mr. Mendoza, I thought he was moving in, and it was his family, you know, a couple kids, the kids are respectful, you know what I mean? They got a couple dogs, I got a dog. I thought this is all cool. And then I hear, you know, the parking situation is horrendous on the block. And I know, I know the conditions of the garage, so, you know, I was taken aback when-
You were taken aback by what?
By the fact that there's not enough parking spaces. I don't believe them garages could hold cars. I was taken aback that-
So you're taking it back with based on your personal opinion of what the last time you saw it?
That was a three-family and without adequate parking. That was, that was, in my mind, a three-family-
And a good portion of the time you lived in this property was a three-family unit?
Up until it-
As an adult?
Yeah.
And now you have a problem with it being a three-family unit?
The parking wasn't a situation then, because it wasn't, it might have been a three-family unit, but there was one family that lived there, and they had two cars. They had the father-in-law lived in the one apartment, the brother-in-law, so it was like an extended family, and there were two cars. So, that should answer your question.
And then Mr. Mendoza purchased it?
Yeah.
And do you know if that was the family that lost the home in a foreclosure? Do you know if they were the first ones, the last ones that lived in the property? Before Mr. Mendoza purchased it? The house sat vacant?
Yeah, it sat vacant for years.
You think, as far as you remember, that those people were the last people that lived in the house?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Was any work performed on this house prior to the permits being pulled?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, I mean, that's why we're here tonight?
Yes, yes, well, that and the extra, we need an extra parking spot.
Okay, thank you. I have to say, though, most of the work didn't require permits. It was painting and flooring. There was very little that required permits, but when I explained it to him, he was cooperative.
Thank you.
If somebody else that wanted us-
Anyone else here to give testimony? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
My name is Carrie Garvey. I'm sorry, I have bronchitis. I live at 1618 Prospect Avenue in Scranton. So I also am concerned about the parking, and as he said, he's going to put in his wife or his daughter's mother with the car, with a fourteen-year-old child. So what happens when that child turns sixteen? Most likely, she'll get a car, she'll drive, so we'll need an additional parking spot. I'm also concerned about the quality of life. I have driven past his other properties that he has owned, and I drove by the property on Diamond Avenue two days ago, the grass is high, there's a window open with all plastic on it. I have pictures to show that, too, so I want to know how he's gonna, how you're gonna justify our quality of life over there. We're all long-timers over there. You know, we want our neighborhood clean, and we don't want it blighted. I have, excuse me, pictures. You saw, you know about his other properties? I looked on the accessor's office, and I was able to pull up his property addresses, and they're all registered in Wilkes-Barre. And I have pictures, if you want to see Diamond Avenue.
I would just question the, I would question the relevance of this. I'm sorry, let me just raise an objection. I think that, and we don't know if there is any citations for any other property. I do know that the condition of any other property would be irrelevant to whether or not the actual variance should be granted in this case, because our variance is based on the fact that we just need one additional parking spot. And I would say that any pictures that are viewed that are relevant to the case are going, may tend to cause the board to have some feelings, one way or the other, about what's going on, and since they're not pictures of the site, and I guess we could have pictures of the actual property, 1611, he's been there since December, I think the condition of that property would be telling not, not any other property.
Well, sustain the objection. It's not relevant to this case.
So I will also say that he has been working on this apartment for a month or more, and stop-work orders were issued, and he did rip them down and continue to work. So, and again, our, he has a lack of-
Just so you know, those stop-work orders were paid.
Okay.
And he stopped doing anything that required permits after that, and agreed to come to the board.
Okay. So our biggest concern is parking, because there's really, there's not enough parking on that street at all. And really, if he gets parking, we're probably going to have to come back and petition for a one-way street, because if cars park on the other side of the street, we're not going to be able to get up and down.
I mean, it looks like he can park about four cars in the rear of the property, and the garages-
If the garages are habitable for cars, yes, but if they're not-
Two garages?
Yeah.
So, and how many parking spots does he need?
If they're not habitable-
He needs four and a half.
If they're not habitable, he could take the garages down and still use the spots.
True.
If they're not habitable.
When I was there, there were cars parked on both sides of the street. Man, you're saying the cars don't park on both sides of the street? No, cars do park on both sides of the street, but as you get up closer to my house, if you park, like, I have to park in almost on my sidewalk, because if I park out like a normal parking spot, and people park across the street, it's hard for cars to get through, and the cars get hit. Seems all, it seems they're all parked, I'm looking at the map right now, the street, they all park on the sidewalk. Yeah. Looks like it's passable, though. Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else to give testimony? Okay, thank you.
Since they seem to be concerned about the parking, would you be willing to start off with the two-unit apartment building there to prove to the neighbors that you're going to do it the right way, and then make the neighborhood nice?
Well, when I bought the property, I bought it because I'm an investor. I sell three units. I pay a lot of taxes on the property. If you knock it down, if you guys knock it down, the taxes, that will be perfect. I start with two units. Because if you can see here, I pay the taxes already, it's almost $3,000. I pay already the garbage, three units. So all my bills are three units. I mean, if you, I mean, if I cannot have money back, yeah, definitely, I start with two units. That's a hundred percent.
But at the same time, sir, I think we are talking about one-
I'm sorry, I have to be a pain. He keeps, he's going to keep coming out if you don't talk into the microphone.
We are here, we're requesting one parking spot because we have four. Perhaps you could put a, of course, you can put a caveat on it that Jack has to go over, make sure that there's four spots available. I promise you that one of these units is going to be inhabited by his daughter. I understand the concerns of the neighbors, that kids, as they grow up, they get cars. I have two fourteen-year-olds myself, so I'm trying to talk them into using one car together, but it's not working. But at the same time, I think that Mr. Mendoza's family is entitled to the same considerations that any other family that bought a house on that block are entitled to. Mr. Mendoza has four spots and only requires one more. I don't think he's overburdening the neighborhood with one more, one more car. And honestly, if one more, allowing one more car at least to park on that street is going to cause a request for a one-way street, I would say that perhaps we should already be looking at making Prospect a one-way street.
I want to go back to a statement you just made, that his family is being treated different. No one's stating or making any kind of accusation that we're going to treat his family different.
No, I'm not making an accusation.
I know, but that's what you said into the record, though.
No, what I said was that, you know, everybody, nobody has to, in that neighborhood, has to worry that, oh, when my, I have a fourteen-year-old daughter, and when they're sixteen, there's going to be an extra car, what are my neighbors going to think? And he doesn't have to do that, and certainly, I know this board-
But that's fine, but they-
I know this board, there was no-
But they're established in that neighborhood, and this gentleman's come before us right now, so there's the difference right there. But that statement was a little bit open, and I took a little offense to what you said.
I apologize, sir, and what I meant was, as I have fourteen-year-old kids, it's not that we could say, oh, you can't have a car, you know, his daughter, you can't have a car when you're sixteen years old.
Well, not to drag us on any, but take his family out of it, and let's look at the other two units, how many cars are we going to be involved in two units, too?
Well, and there's a necessity, and you've already figured that, and it's just the one-
Right, right, I mean, by the same, we're looking at the whole picture, not just his family.
So he already, he agreed to two, and you're saying, and you're saying no?
No, he's not, he's not agreed to two. He said, I'm sorry, there's no agreement to two.
Okay, so-
He has already paid taxes for three units, he has already paid fees for three units.
Okay.
And despite what we've heard here today, we also know that Mr. Sweeney has said that he came to, once he learned that he needed the permits, he came and got them, and has a good relationship with Mr. Sweeney, so.
I'll make a motion to vote.
A second.
George?
No.
Mr. Gattens?
No.
Ms. Newcomb?
No.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
No.
Chairman O'Neil?
Yes. With a vote four to one, you've been denied.
Thank you, sir.
Call the next case, please.
I have a number two, 111 Prospect Avenue, Adam Giuffrida.
Would you want to square him?
Want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Adam Giuffrida, 1115 Electric Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
May I proceed?
Thank you. May I please, the board, I'm Attorney Ed Kroyak, I'm here for Mr. Giuffrida and his company. I've been able to provide to you this evening a number of documents which we intend, asked to be submitted into the record. By way of background, 111 Prospect Street was a condemned property, it was a mortgage foreclosure. Mr. Giuffrida intended to at least purchase the building, and because of title problems, could not close in January. The property, as I indicated, was, exhibit was condemned back in October. Mr. Giuffrida attempted to get permits, once the title issues were cleared up, and we would submit that, under the guidelines for the Scranton ordinances, he meets within the six-month period for abandonment. And we understand the board's concerns about these issues and problems. So with that, we have submitted additional evidence to show that with the time the permits were taken out, once the title cleared up, to get the property as a, back to a four-unit, which originally was developed through a number of years. Considering that, however, we did come up with plans in preparation tonight to exhibit to you that the, for a variance for, from a two-unit to a four-unit, since this is R2. If you find there was no abandonment, if the abandonment has elapsed and it was abandoned, we do have a request to keep it as a four-unit building. Long story short, this building has been, has been used as a four-unit throughout the entire time. It's a very large building that was quite rundown in the neighborhood. And I think if anybody went by the building before, it was in foreclosure, I said, and really, really rundown. Mr. Giuffrida has some very aggressive plans to convert this building and turn it into a very modernic structure. Attached, I also gave you this, this map, circled in orange are additional properties Mr. Giuffrida owns in the neighborhood. And just a little background, what he's going to do with the property. It's going to be a four-unit, first floor's going to have two two-bedrooms, the second floor's going to have living space on the second and third floor. Attached also is a, two parking proposals to meet the variance requirements for a four-unit building. We would prefer, considering the concerns the board had with maybe parking and the neighbors around the area, we did develop two plans, and Mr. Mendoza is here, to give the testimony if necessary regarding the two different plans. We would prefer to go with the first plan, Plan A- We would prefer to go with the first plan, Plan A, which is a four, six units, six parking spots in the rear. If you notice, to the back of the property of 111, there is a vacant lot...
You said six units.
Sorry, it's four units, six, six units parking. Sorry about that. In the rear of the property, there's four units right in the rear of the property itself. Addition to that, on that Plan A, there's gonna be additional, two spots on property Mr. Giuffrida already owns. He's gonna have the company lease those two additional spots to make it six, to meet the parking requirements. So the only issue that we would assert, if you find that the property was abandoned, would be, keep it converted, keep it as a four-unit. And by way of background, let me just tell you what he's gonna do, he hired a professional architect and engineer to go in there, design the units. The place is gonna be completely gutted, new front porch, new roof, new windows, all hardwood flooring, laundry on the first floor, laundry on the second floor, furnaces, so it's basically gonna be a brand-new structure inside the building, and put it back on the tax rolls. We work, we know that there was prior concerns about the neighbors and the neighbors, I think we've addressed those issues with Plan A, and I think that, considering the other properties he owns on there, he's really developing this block into, getting something on the tax rolls. If you have additional questions, Mr. Giuffrida is here, Mr. Mendoza is also here today to testify regarding the plans. I think the parking spots are nine feet each in the rear, and that would cover it for Plan A. If you have a problem with Plan A, we have a Plan B, just as a backup.
So just to make it clear, the adjoining lot is also...
Owned by him in the rear.
Okay.
The rear, and the rear of the adjoining lot are two spots that he proposed in Plan A, that were part of the parking lot that he came, came about last month, so...
That's, there's a difference there, if, Ms. Newcomb...
So he wants to park two cars on that back lot that we said no to, see?
Correct. Let me, let me interject here. I think the only way you can approve that, I know what your worry is, is if that lot, or at least that piece of that lot, is made part of 111 Prospect, so it can't be sold separately, it would have to be all one unit, all one property.
We would, I think the alternative, either a transfer of the, of the portion of that lot over, or a lease of that portion to 111 Prospect, would be the two options we would follow with.
Right, right, 'cause we can't approve it with those two property, those two parking spaces on a lot that he may be able to sell to somebody else. So you need either to attach it to this unit, or have a rental agreement to, a permanent easement for those two spots, you know, something of that nature.
And that's what we would, that's what we would agree to, and obviously propose, either a transfer of a portion of that lot, or have an easement agreement for those two spots to guarantee the six spots at all times, on that issue.
And I noticed, you produced, you mentioned you preferred Plan A, but Plan B is a whole parking lot in itself.
That was an alternative, in case, in case you didn't want to go with Plan A, we prefer going with Plan A. The other lots, we're not gonna use if you go with our Plan A, which is six, six spots in the back.
When I went over there, I noticed, and speaking for myself, I prefer your Plan A, because in between the buildings right now, there's grass, it's a nice green space between the building. And I think most people on this board know, I'm truly against putting parking lots in neighborhoods, and that...
Me, too.
By doing A, it eliminates what I, what I have a problem with, I'll say. The only thing I ask is if you do that, where you do lease the two spots over, that you block off the rest, the remaining of that lot, that you were here last month with, and to avoid anyone sneaking in there parking.
We would agree to that also. And I believe that the lot, you're correct, the lot next to 111 is a green space, you can, it's keeping its green space landscaped and maintained, so it improves the neighborhood as well, and I think addresses some of the neighbors' concerns they, they might have.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to give testimony? Okay.
Oh, just one question, so those four spots, the first four spots that are in the back of the house in question, will be in the backyard?
Yes, the rear of the property.
Okay, 'cause that's the other thing, like, turning backyards into parking lots, too, is our other...
Rear property off the alley.
Right off the alley?
Yes.
Which is a pretty small alley. And I, I mean, I pulled in there and then tried to back out, it's, it's a tight squeeze, so...
But that will alleviate the other neighbors' concerns, I think it's, we had, we had an option of doing, you know, going for a bigger parking lot, coming off of Prospect, or doing it that way, that seemed to be the best avenue for everybody in the neighborhood to make it, to ensure that everyone was satisfied with the project.
Are you planning on paving that back section?
Yeah, I could pave it, that's not a problem. And if I did pave it, we would put no parking, or tenant parking only, we would also put lines in, and they'd be reserved spots.
I think it would look a lot nicer if you did go ahead and pave it and line it.
Yeah, parking's an issue back there, and I know if I don't pave it, and, or line it, and mark it as reserved, it's, there's gonna be everybody parking there.
Thank you.
Dan, do we have to add anything to, as far as attaching for the two parking spots?
What I was going to do here is list two conditions. One is either a lease agreement or easement agreement for parking spaces five and six. And second, to bring up Bob's concern, is some type of separation, whether it be a fence or a row of arborvitaries, to separate Lot 6 from the rest of the lot. I think that, one of you up there, you know, some, some type of separation, so that cars can't go past Lots, or Parking Space 6.
I, I see, so you're talking about a separation on, the other lot is 612 Music Street, so to separate the parking from the rest of the lot, a separation?
Yeah, some type of, whether you put greenery, or a fence, or something to separate it.
Yeah, we'll do a four-foot buffer, a planting strip.
Okay.
And Dan, do we need to put in there regarding the paving?
Uh, paving is required when there's six parts, parking spots, anyway.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Dean, there are two separate pieces of property, don't you need a buffer on both sides of the property?
Well, he's got the buffer on the side of the Warren property.
The Warner property.
Right, and on the other side, he owns it anyway.
Right.
So...
I guess my question to you is, don't you need a buffer on the other side of the property?
You could use a three-foot buffer, we could, and that should be included in the lease agreement or easement agreement, an extra three feet beyond.
But then you don't get your parking spaces, the parking spaces don't add up.
No, you still get your six, but you're taking...
You're not at 34 feet.
No, no, you're taking a little bit more off of the lot, not off the parking spaces.
Right, so if it was three foot on each side, that would be 34 feet. You need nine foot per parking, am I right?
No, no, we're not effect, we're not changing the parking spaces. Next to Parking Space Number Six, we have to have a, an additional buffer of three feet beyond Parking Space Number Six.
So if he sells this piece of property...
Right.
...with them four parking spaces, and there's no buffer...
I think I, I see what he's saying, he just wants a, a buffer in between four and five?
Lot, right.
So if it's sold, it's not right on top, you know, there's like a green area or something, between four and five?
Well, now you don't fit, now you don't fit the criteria there.
That really doesn't make much sense, though.
No, you still fit the criteria, you're, no.
But you have to be nine foot wide on the parking spaces.
I think the question is, if that lot is sold...
What I'm saying is, if this is three feet, and that's three feet, there's not 36 feet here, there's only 34 feet.
Okay, I was putting more, more over here.
Right.
Okay, so that this way, he has the buffer on both sides.
Why can't he just go one, two, three, one, two, three?
Well, then you're...
Because that's tight, I mean, I, my yard is 42 feet wide, and...
You can make that suggestion, if the rest of the board...
Right, because what I'm saying is, is, my yard is 42 feet wide, there is no way possible that I can park four cars next to each other, and I have fences. So what I, what I'm proposing to you is one, two, three in the backyard with a decent-sized buffer, and then one, two, three in that additional lot. It's all dead space, anyway, am I right by saying that, or no?
It is all dead space.
I think...
But wait, hold on just to make sure, then if there's three in that spot, and it's sold, that wouldn't cover that house, then, or, oh, yes, it would, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a vacant, it's a vacant lot as it is right now, anyway. So he can move...
And he owns that vacant lot.
And he owns it, so he can move an additional space over if you guys go along with this, Mr. Palmetes is asking.
I mean, I think if you plan, you plan on deeding that over to that property?
The, the, the future plan is eventually, if Ms. Sue Cleary sells the small house on Music Street, that will be purchased, that will be torn down, and then we'll come to you again and do more zoning for more parking on that alley, and then probably do more green space where her property is, on, on Music Street. I mean, I, I built a community garden for the neighbors on 107 Prospect, there's a ton of green space, I would hate to lose it, but if I had to lose it, I would.
So, just one more question here.
Sure.
You have no intentions of putting another structure on that property?
No, that, that's not buildable.
No, I mean on the, the lot facing Prospect Avenue?
No, no. If it was, if it had, the lot doesn't go all the way through because of Music Street, so it's, it would, the structure would be, say, you could say landlocked because of the parking, so it would never be approved, because there'd be zero parking on it, so that, that would be a, that, that's not even, I don't think that's possible.
So you're okay with the three in the back of the property, and three to the left of the property?
That, that's fine with me, yeah.
I'm just saying, for the sake of ding-ding doors, you know what I mean, you know how people open car doors?
Right, right. So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, you want a three-foot buffer on the 111 Prospect, and we'll do a three-foot buffer on, a planting strip on both sides of 111 Prospect. Then on 612 Music Street, we'll park three cars, and then we'll do another three-foot buffer to separate from, from the rest?
Right, and now, in between the properties, I'm just saying that four cars ain't gonna fit there.
Okay, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying.
No problem.
I understand the concept, I, I don't think there's a need for that, Dan, I mean...
Well, again, that's, you're, you guys prerogative as to whether you want to go with the plan as is, or the amended plan that Mr. Palmetes is asking.
The only problem I have with amending the plan, from what we originally discussed, is it's gonna be a lease agreement, and down the road, if, just say the properties do sell and everything, now we're gonna lose, we're gonna have a property that has four units or three parking spots in the rear.
Well, it...
At least, if we kept it with four.
No, no, because the condition of the three units, or the four units, I'm sorry, is that he has the six parking spots. If he loses them, then he, he doesn't have the four units anymore.
So, fighters down the road, if he lost them?
That could be revoked, yes.
Okay.
Okay, the first thing we have to do is add condition number one, which is a lease or a permanent easement agreement for two or three spaces, depending on what we're doing on that one lot. And number two is that we, we attach it a three-foot buffer at the end of the six parking spot, Parking Space Number Six, a three-foot buffer. So let's add those conditions first, and then we'll talk about Mr. Palmetes's suggestion.
So I'll make a motion on the first two.
Second.
Mr. Walsh.
Wait, wait, what was that motion?
The motion is to add the two conditions. One is that he provide Jack with a copy of a permanent lease agreement or easement agreement for the spaces that are gonna go on that other lot. And two, that he provides a three-foot buffer at the end of Space Number Six, so that it separates it from the rest of the lot.
With the actual, original variance for the four unit?
Yes.
Okay, so we're voting on the whole?
No, we're just voting on adding those conditions...
Oh, okay.
...to the request for the four units.
Okay, gotcha.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Gattens.
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb.
No.
Mr. Palmetes.
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill.
Yes.
Okay, so now we have those two conditions. Now, the next condition was Mr. Palmetes's suggestion that instead of going four spots and two spots, to go three spots and three spots. So the question is, for the board, is to decide whether you want to go three and three, or four and two. Okay?
So, okay, make a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Mr. Walsh.
So a no vote is pretty original plan.
Tell, say, say it clearly.
Three but three, or four and two?
Do you want to go three and three, or four and two?
Four and two.
Mr. Gattens.
Four and two.
Ms. Newcomb.
I liked the three and three.
Mr. Palmetes.
Three and three.
Chairman O'Neill.
Four and two. With a vote three to two, it's...
Okay, so that, that condition is off. So we're really just voting now for the four units with the two conditions that we approved before.
Make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Gattens.
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb.
I'm gonna have to say no, the parking lot in the backyard issue.
Mr. Palmetes.
No.
Chairman O'Neill.
Yes, with a grant, three to two. Thank you very much for your time, have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Let's call the next case.
Agenda item number three, Main at Main in Swetland LLC.
Evening, members.
All right.
May I please the board, Jack, Attorney Petitar, my name is Larry Moran, I'm a Scranton attorney, I represent the owners and developers of a new commercial development and revitalization project occurring, West End and South End, and it's in Amherst Street, and Elstebank. Mike, I'm gonna present you folks with some documents at the moment, if I have permission to do so, I have one witness, it's our engineer, and he's prepared rendering plans that he would like to make the board through with the testimony, to provide advance comments to each of you, by the testimony. And it will hopefully explain, given the great deal, law is very often aggressive toward your application, which is important, a variance among the parking, commercial parking structures and so on. Emmett, briefly state your name, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were, please listen to the court reporter.
Raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Emmett Mancinelli, last name is M.A.N.C.I.N.E.L.L.I., my address is 625 East Drinker Street, Dunmore, 18512.
Emmett, what is your profession?
I'm an engineer registered in Pennsylvania.
In particular, do you have a specialty?
Mostly land development work, zoning work, things of that nature.
Please, the board, would you like me to qualify him, Dan, any further?
I think Mr. Mancinelli has been before this board a number of times, so we're familiar with his qualifications.
Well, Mr. Mancinelli, we'll work backwards, okay?
Okay.
What is the specific request that you're making of this board today?
The specific request that we are making is to be allowed a reduction in the required number of parking spaces for a development.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you to, to generally describe, and we were here not before this board, but recently, before council, about this project, the Scranton Times was here, it was featured in the, in the newspaper last week, the governor was here last October to award a million and a half dollars of state money toward this project. Just to set the table, we're now in what's called the post-award phase, where we're submitting the required documentation to the state to get the matching funding, part of that is zoning approval. So, you know, where, where we are in the project is, you know, we're beyond shovel-ready, we're looking to convert what is an existing kind of blighted block into a new commercial and professional medical complex, with a, a physical therapist clinic, it's one of several that this, this professional has in the area, is putting a location in West Scranton, we have a pharmacy going there, and then we have space for five, between 1,000 and 1,500 square foot office spaces on the second floor. So, Emmett, right now, what is, what exists at this, at this present project?
Right now, the, the top aerial view that you have, the property consists of a three-story building on the corner of Amherst and South Main, that has a video store, a tattoo parlor, and on the second and third floor, there are two apartments per floor for total four units in that building.[1778.01] units in that building. And then adjacent to that building is a, a one-story commercial building, Saki Restaurant is in that space right now, there's a banquet room and two single, or two apartments above that space.
So before we get to the rendering, I want to just establish what is a part of the project and what is not. So, right here on the corner, these first two buildings, we are gonna revitalize and convert those into new structures.
Correct.
Then, then joining those properties is the Saki Restaurant.
Correct, that will remain, yes.
As well as the dance studio here, and then there's a church here that's part of our property.
Correct, on the corner, yes.
So, moving forward, then, you know, to go through the rest of your documents, Emmett, what, what does this document show the board?
That, that drawing is a surveyor's drawing of the property that we're working on, those large black objects are the buildings, I just thought the color photograph might make it easier to pick out what was what.
Okay, so, so, so the small parcel I'm pointing at, just in order, the first building on the corner.
Right, so the...
What in particular will go there?
What will go there will be a pharmacy and a physical therapist office that will have an indoor pool for therapy. And then upstairs, the second floor of that building, will be the additional office space.
Okay, Emmett, what is your understanding of what Scranton zoning ordinance requires as far as parking for those, for those uses, the physical therapist and the pharmacist, as well as the five commercial offices on the second floor?
I went through the zoning ordinance for Scranton, and based on our interpretation, we would have a, a physical therapist of about 2,000 square feet, however, there's, there's one therapist, sometimes two, on, on staff and a few employees. So we assumed, there's no physical therapy used in the ordinance, so we used a medical criteria of five spaces for each doctor, we're saying five spaces for each therapist, and then one for each employee, so we're saying three employees would require 13 for that use.
And Emmett, you're familiar with this doctor, you've actually helped develop some of his other sites.
Yes.
What is your understanding of this doctor's regular working hours?
He's generally nine to five, he does have evening hours, usually once, once a week, and he's not always open every day, so some days there'll be, there'll be no hours, it just rotates through his other facilities.
And, and the pharmacy, is it, I mean, we're not talking about a CVS like up on Meadow Avenue that's 24 hours, this is a, a, a family kind of small?
Yes, this, the pharmacy is a small family pharmacy that generally is open until, you know, nine to five, he does have Saturday hours until, I'm sorry, nine, yeah, nine until noon, I believe, on Saturdays, and I think he's open one night a week, Wednesdays until seven.
And then the expectation on the second floor is to put professional offices there, correct, I mean attorneys, potentially?
Correct, the, the, the second floor offices are earmarked to try to target medical or professional uses for office space.
So we're not talking about retail or something with heavy commercial foot traffic? Okay. How about the Saki Restaurant next door, do you have any understanding of what the regular hours of the Saki Restaurant are?
Next door to Saki Restaurant, I believe they open for lunch, I, I think they're closed in the morning generally, so typical restaurant, restaurant schedule.
So it would kind of be staggered, these restaurants open in the evenings, somewhat the, our, our uses would be closed. Okay, moving to the third page, Emmett, this, this is a, an architect's rendering, what does that take?
This, this, this rendering on the third page is, is an overlay of a rendering on an actual photograph of, of Main Street at that Main Street Amherst intersection. So the, the building on the corner is what we're proposing to do, and as you go up the street, you can see the, the single-story building above the white car on Main Avenue goes off to your right as you look at the photograph, so that's the existing restaurant. Then the next building is the dance studio, and in the very far back, you can kind of see the church, the white part of the church there is still in that photograph, and that, that will be removed.
And my understanding, Emmett, is that this, this site is just about on the border of Scranton and I'll call it Taylor, right?
Yes.
So this would essentially be, you know, a new, a new, a new structure that what I'm gonna call the crown jewel, it would be something that, that visitors and residents will see as the first object coming into Scranton if they're traveling up from the south, correct, I mean?
Correct, there, there's gonna be a lot of attention to some landscaping, we're gonna add, right now, the sidewalk goes right up to the buildings that exist, and there's about a 20-foot wide sidewalk along that stretch of Main Avenue. The actual property line is about 10 feet off the face of the building. So what we are planning to do, as is shown in the rendering, is we like to take the 10 feet along the buildings, remove the sidewalk, add some landscaping and things like that to dress it up, to make it a nice...
Can I ask a question about the rendering? Is it a pretty close rendering of what the building will actually look like?
Yes, the rendering is actually based on our drawings of the building.
Because the middle part of the building has three floors, and you just mentioned first and second floor.
No, the, the offices, what's happening is on the second floor and the front of the building, the building...
In the corner.
There's not a lot of room for windows, so there's, there's a loft area to each of the offices in the front.
Okay, so that, that third, where all those windows are on the third floor where the circle is, that's part of the second floor?
Yes, so you would go into an office on the second floor, and they would have space on both second and third floor. The third floor is not accessible from anywhere but within the office.
Okay.
And Emmett, I understand that we have these buildings under agreement, we're gonna convert, what is the existing, what's existing there right now, what do they look like, how are they being used?
The existing building that's on the corner is, is in, in fairly rough shape, it's being used as the video store and a tattoo place, there's some apartments upstairs. The restaurant is in, is, is, is an existing restaurant, the, the operators put some recent renovations into that, so the interior's fixed up very nice. The dance studio, I'm, I'm not too familiar with, I know it's been there for a while, and then the, the church is now, because of the project, has been under sale, of agreement of sale is now vacant, just to be simple.
Can you opine about job creation in particular, as that was an aspect of, of the RACB process, and as it stands right now, this project will create jobs?
Well, yes, obviously, we're gonna be bringing in some, some operators that will have to hire some people to operate their facilities, this will not be people from facility, people don't move from facility to facility, this will be staffed locally, I'm saying locally, but it will be staffed new, with new employees.
So going...
In the case of both the pharmacy and chiropractor that are, are signed up to be here, they will be increasing staff.
Okay, and based on some of your submissions to Jack Sweeney, you, you indicate that the existing parking requirement is 55 spaces, and 15 are available, which, which leaves us with, with a shortage of 40 right now.
Right.
And I would like you to kind of just describe on the, on the drawing, where the existing parking is right now for the board.
Okay, if you go back to that first, maybe the first, the first page, that overhead photograph is the best.
The color draw.
What, what's, what's happening right now is the, I don't know, I'll try to point it out here, these buildings right here, with that paved area to the rear, they're the buildings that are part of the project, the restaurant is in the center, and the apartment building and video store on the outside. So there's a small area into the back, it's a very irregular shape, that dumps out onto Wolf Court in the back, is a 14-foot wide paved alley. So there, there's room there for about 15 cars without blocking cars in and double parking because of the odd shape to keep the alley open and things of that nature. So that's about where the 15 spots are right now. There's, there's no striping, there's no designated lanes or ingress or egress, so that's just about what could fit back there.
Okay, and then now, talk about the church, what's your expectation for this, this parcel where the church sits right now, is correct?
The church, the, the expectation is that the church will be demolished, and we will convert that entire parcel into a 30-space parking lot to support the project.
Okay, so you indicate, given your letter to Jack, our proposed parking requirement, basically, I don't know, the proposal for the new, for the, for the new construction will look like, is 73 spaces. I personally think that that's high, because I think, you calculated that again, huh?
I, I calculated that again based on maximum expected people at the facilities, like, for instance, the, the therapist sometimes is not there, there's, there's no, there's just office hours for staff. At the very most, I know the, the pool is only used, there's a therapist that does the pool work, they'll only do that one day a week. So at one point, I'm showing that we're gonna have two therapists, but in all likelihood, it will be one for the most of the time, but there will be one, one instance a, a week where they may have two. So we are assuming, as the doctor's use, because that was the closest we could find in parking, that we would need 13 spots for that use. In, in reality, I think it's probably more like five or seven on a daily basis.
I would think in a doctor's office, too, it's probably more than a therapist, right? Because therapists are, you know, to every half hour, you wait, you wait two hours in a doctor's office.
The problem is, there, there's nothing in the ordinance that, that would guide you on what a therapist's parking was, but it's more one-on-one, you're right, so basically, you might have the, the therapist treating a patient, maybe someone drove them there and they're sitting in the waiting room, you know, and then that's really it, it's all by appointment, so it's not...
Yeah, but what I'm saying, like, with a doctor's office, you probably have five people in queue waiting to go in, and a therapist's office, it's as, when you're out, you're in.
Well, in, in, in our calculation, to get to the 73, I wanted to be conservative because I, I didn't know how the board would treat it, because there wasn't any, there's not a therapist use for parking in the ordinance, so I, I thought that might be the most conservative.
To be clear, Emmett, we're talking about raising this building, converting this into a 30-spot parking lot.
Yes.
And then the initial, I don't know if it was 11 spaces, we, we want it, will be in the rear of the building.
Yeah, in... What we're going to do in the rear of the existing buildings, we're gonna add curbing and landscaping to make a channelized parking, so that we have designated parking, a lane to drive through, so it's not gonna be just a, an area of pave. So with that, we can fit 11 spots by ordinance in that paved area to the rear of the existing buildings, plus we can fit 30 in the lot where the church is now, to give us a total of 41 for the project.
So to be clear, this parking lot is only gonna be for that new addition, none of the buildings that are there will not be able to use it?
The developer...
There's a dan, well, the dance squad, I just didn't know who the lot was for, I want to be clear on who the lot is.
The lot is not for the dance studio, we don't know where the dance studio parks right now.
They park on the street, because that's where I park when I go there, but, I just lost my train of thought, so...
No, no, I, I think I know what you're gonna say, the developer who's developing this project is buying the building that contains the restaurant. So we're taking the restaurant, the addition to the building, and we're lumping them all together. So we're saying, well, we have our restaurant and, and all those uses, with, with the addition, we go from what is now there would require 53, we're, I'm sorry, 55.
You'll have 41.
We're now saying we need 73 because of the assumptions we made on what the therapist would need and the new offices. So what's gonna happen is we're gonna take those uses, so that same owner will own the parking lot, so that parking lot will be for his facility, which will include the restaurant.
How will you, how will you assure that the dance studio, people do not park in that lot? Because if they park in that lot, you're losing a lot of space. Like, are you gonna have signage that's saying parking for?
We'll post it and enforce it.
It could, it could be, yeah.
Well, the only reason I ask is because I, when they see parking lot, they, ooh, I don't have to park on the street anymore, they see a parking lot, they're gonna wanna park in it, if you, if you have a sign saying parking for so-and-so only.
Well, we, we, at this point in the, in the project, we don't have a name for the building or anything like that, but we could certainly put a sign up that it's...
Well, that's why it says so-and-so.
Parking for, for those entities.
Well, that's, that was, that's my concern, because these people see a lot, they wanna park in it, they don't care if they're allowed or not, they'll park in it. And then you're losing space, even though the dance school's not opened, they're usually only open later in the day.
And, and the one thing that I wanted to put out to the board is, if you look at the additional space that we're adding to the property, that would require 18 more parking spots, just the additional uses that we're adding to the site, and we're gonna provide 30 over on this lot. So right now, what we're able to do is, we have eight excess spots from the shortage, so that we're, we're taking a situation where we, we started out by saying we were short parking, we, we have some extra spots that we could help offset some of that shortage. So we're taking an existing...
So, just so the board is clear, the existing businesses that are there today, there's, we're short 40 parking spots. After the project is completed, the shortage will be reduced to 32 parking spots.
Correct.
That's what you're telling the board, right?
Exactly, yes.
That's exactly right. So Emmett, you know, you have a lot of personal firsthand knowledge about and participation in this project, and you're a professional, in your personal and professional experience, do you believe that any, any threat to, to, to the health, safety, welfare of the community will be occasioned by the lack of parking, the shortfall of parking that we're talking about? Do you think that, do you think that these uses can withstand the available parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay, and do you believe, and, and again, in your personal experience of this project, that any, that this, this owner would experience any hardship if the various requests are denied?
Yeah, yes.
And what is the nature of that hardship?
The, the hardship would, would be that the, the best use of this property would not be attained, it's a commercial district, it, it, it would be a tremendous upgrade in the area.
If we can't send the governor's budget office zoning approval, what happens to that RACB?
It pretty much starts, starts all over or ends it.
Okay, and it probably kills the project.
Yes.
You have anything else you'd like to add to the board?
Not at this time.
Does the board have any questions for us?
On Cornell Street, I was here four times in the last five days, there's five or six parking spots that go from Main Avenue to this court, so you're gonna take three of them spots away with the entrance to your parking lot. Am I right by saying that?
No.
Well, what, the, how you gonna get in the driveway?
There's, there's just one, one opening back toward the rear of the property.
And that's 20 feet?
Yes.
Is it 20 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so how far is it from the corner of the alley and the beginning of the drive?
I, I, I couldn't tell you, the whole property is 141 feet from Main Avenue to the, to the alley, I would say it's about 20 feet from, from the alley to the beginning of the parking as you go, I'm sorry, it's about 20 feet from the alley to the beginning of the driveway as you go toward Main Avenue.
My concern is that cars, not so much Cornell Street, but Amherst Street where the, where the facility is, the drugstore is gonna be, there's no parking on Main Avenue, so you're gonna be pushing cars up into Amherst Street, which is gonna be a terrible inconvenience to the people that live there.
Well, well, no, because what would happen is if you were to come up Amherst Street, you could turn and park in the back of the facility, we have 11...
Five spots there.
Pardon me?
You have five spots there.
There's 11.
Well, that handicap spot that's over where this walk-in cooler, is that walk-in cooler coming out of it?
Yes.
Okay, so you have 11 spots, and how many people are gonna work there?
The pharmacy?
The pharmacy and the therapist and whatever office there.
The police park up on the church, then?
Well, the idea would be that if they were to come up Amherst and into that parking lot, and it was full, they would then be able to make a right-hand turn and go down to Cornell Street and then park in the parking lot.
I, I disagree with what you're saying, because if you go to any drugstore, the people will double park in front of a drugstore rather than go to an assigned parking place, along with, most of these people getting therapy are gonna be elderly people, they're not gonna get out and walk 150, 200 feet to a therapy center.
No, no, typically, what would happen is on, on the remote parking like that, the employees would park over there to save the space for the customers, and if anyone would, would need assistance to, to, it could be dropped off on Amherst, or they could be dropped off in the alley, or in the parking lot to the rear, and then the other, you know, you could go park your car over, I mean...
So you're gonna have valet parking then, is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is if you needed to park, you could, if, if, you're suggesting that people would be dropping people off, they don't have to drop people off on Amherst, there's gonna be entrances from the back of the building to get in, as well as on the sidewalk on Amherst, so you'd be able to drop someone off, pull off the road, drop them off to the rear, and then continue on, once a person is in the building, you can continue and park your car in the parking lot.
So something like Allied Rehab is the only thing I can think of that has that, where you drop off, patient drop off, under a little bridge, and then park, so you will have a, a spot marked, like drop-off area?
No, it's, it's not, it's not necessarily...
I, I see both of your...
It, it's, it's a parking lot, you, you would simply park in an available spot behind the building, or proceed to the, to the corner of Cornell and Amherst to park?
I, I, I see what both you're saying, because I, I've seen people at, at a place, that there are elderly people that can't get to, from, from the parking lot to the thing, so they're gonna, that's what he's saying.
This, this is not necessarily elderly people, this, this, he does sports injuries-
That's a worst case.
And knees and things like that, so I've been in his office, there's a, a large cross-section of people through there, it's not, it's not an elderly only or, or anything like that.
I think that was just an example he was giving, but...
Right, what I'm saying is people would rather double park or park on your sidewalk than walk, is what I'm saying.
Well, part of this project involves new curbing and sidewalks, so there's not gonna, you're not gonna be able to park on the sidewalk because there'll be a curb, and then, as far as, as Amherst goes, I, I don't know that there's, I've not seen cars parked there right now, I don't know if it is or isn't designated a parking or no parking. But I mean, I think you have to realize the one thing is, as people are going to[1786.32] But I mean, I think you have to realize the one thing is as people are going to the physical therapist, they're going by appointment. So it could be very simple to, to direct people when they're dropping people off to do so in the rear or when they're, you know, they need to do to park.
I'll give you an example, because this, this, this therapist is a neighbor of mine in my Luzerne County office. When we had the snowstorm in March, he called me and said, "Do you mind if I make arrangements to have some of my customers, if I need it, park in your lot?" So he's a pretty diligent guy that way in terms of making advance arrangements, because he did it with me last month.
But you have nowhere else to make them arrangements here?
Well, what, what Emmett was saying, he anticipates his calendar, looks at the appointments, and will limit his appointments, because this is a comparatively smaller location than any of his other facilities. It's really an office of convenience for his West Granton patients.
But there is the thirty-spot parking lot that he would have access, him and his patients would have access to.
Right.
And there's no one else to give testimony here, or is there anyone to give testimony?
Not on, not on the applicant side.
Just curious about, uh, just a quick question, uh. What are you gonna do for lighting in that parking lot?
I'm sorry?
Lighting.
Lighting? We are working on the design of that parking lot, so we're doing part of a streetscape project on Main Avenue, so there'll be some lights on Main Avenue. And there'll probably be lights in the landscape beds on, on, um, the back by Wolf Court, projecting toward the parking lot.
That's gonna light up the parking lot? That's the game plan, you're gonna light it?
Yes, it will be lit for, for nighttime, sure. And, and primarily because during the winter, when it's dark early, there, there may be some extended hours that would have to be lit. Not, it will not, it's not an overnight parking lot and won't be lit all night.
May reserve the opportunity to call Mr. Mansonelli as a rebuttal witness if necessary.
You may approach the bench. Or the, not the bench podium. Uh, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear your testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So if you're done, uh, state your name and address.
Francis May, twelve twenty-five Snyder Avenue, Scranton. I live approximately one block from this. But I've lived my whole life in this neighborhood, and I was born and raised in Amherst Street, and my family still lives on Amherst Street. Um, this project would, uh, is a very nice project and would improve the neighborhood. The only question is, um, the parking. I have some questions that I'd like, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what we're here.
Has the develop, does the developer own the church on the corner of Cornell and, uh, Main Avenue?
At, at this time, the developer has an agreement of sale for that property.
Everything is contingent upon approvals.
Yes, so, so-
So he does plan to buy the property?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Does, does the, I see from these paperwork that you gave us that the, there's two different names. The, the restaurant is in one name, and then the corner lot where you're ripping down the building is in another name. Does the developer plan to purchase both of those properties?
Y- yes, uh, maybe this will help you. We, we have, um, already appro, we've already gone to the planning commission. The, the lots on, if, if I can come over there for a second?
Sure.
The lots on the corner, um, let me do this. Okay. We're, we're looking at, at this map right here. Okay, so right now, the, the lot that we are proposing to, to knock down the building and put the addition on, not the church, but the, the rest of the project, it presently consists of four lots, okay? The restaurant is actually built on two lots. There's a property line that runs through the restaurant. So the restaurant-
Could I stop you there? The restaurant is made up of two different properties. If you look at the restaurant, on the south side of the restaurant was a dinette called Mrs. Chmikowski's, Mrs. C's. And that's where the two apartments are upstairs, and downstairs was a dinette. That building had a fire in the previous owner, and it was condemned, and then it was rebuilt. And it was rebuilt by the previous owner. This is not that long ago. He tore down the building next door, which was Mrs. Codick's store and house, and he put the one-story addition onto the restaurant in that place. And that was a separate address and a separate building. So if you look at the restaurant, the restaurant over on the south side is two stories. And if you look at the restaurant over on the right side, it is one story. And that's all new construction on the north side, and that was another building. And the previous owner, right before he sold it, put that addition on where you, where the, where the Asian restaurant is now where it operates, okay? And where the apartments was, that was all gutted and remodeled, okay? And then subsequently, two more additions were put on that building. So we've had three additions on that building. The second addition was the addition of the kitchen on the back. And then the third addition was the apartments upstairs were empty, and the city made them fix them. But to fix them, they had, the staircase was, was, was no, there was no staircase going upstairs, or it was, but they made them enclose it in masonry so it would be fireproof to get to the apartments. So there's been three additions on that building. Now, so you're proposing, so, and that's why that building looks like it does. So it's two different lots at one point.
Okay, and, and right now it still is. And then on the corner, the building that's on the corner that has the video store and the tattoo, uh, parlor is on one lot, and the paved area behind it is the fourth lot.
Cause that, that used to be, that used to be many, many years ago a garage. And they tore it, they tore the garage down. It was an automobile repair garage, and they tore it down to make the parking lot.
Okay, so we have been to the Scranton Planning Commission to join those four parcels into one. So that has been through the planning. The planning commission has, has approved that, uh, reverse subdivision. And we are now waiting for, um, the, uh, current owners to sign the plan to indicate that they consent to the, the joining. So that, so, so when this is done, there will be one building on one lot. So it will all be one building. From the dance studio to Amherst will be one building and one lot.
So you're telling me the developer will own the church, he will own the restaurant, and he will own the new building on the corner?
And it will be two lots.
Right. Because it's a separate apartment.
Right, right. It will be two lots.
Okay, okay.
And, and this, this joining of the lots has already been approved by the planning commission.
Okay.
And we're just going through the signature.
I know this is not supposed to go, maybe the board won't wanna hear this, but you appeared before city council two weeks ago. Or somebody did.
Yeah, we were both there.
Yes, and I saw it on TV. I caught it. And you gave a little presentation on this particular development, but you also said there would be a second part of it.
We were here on phase two of that, that, two weeks ago, across the street.
Across the street, yes. There's, there's, there's another, there's another piece of the project across the street. Um, and council, we had requested a vacation of an unnamed alley between two properties.
That has nothing to do with this.
That's not, yeah, that's not relevant to what we're-
It's not before you now.
No.
But the only reason I brought it up is they brought it up at city council. I did not know that.
Right, but we have to stick to what's going on tonight.
Okay. All right, I, I have, I have some more questions. When you put the new building up, will the new building will be against the present restaurant that's there?
It will be against the present building, yes.
Right, there's five feet or four feet between the two buildings presently.
Uh, yes.
Okay, and so when you put these two buildings together and you build a new building, don't you have to meet some kind of setbacks that are required?
No, because it will be one lot. Um, the only thing that we have to do is meet the fire, uh, codes and fire separation distances.
So you don't have to meet any setback from Main Avenue, any setback from the building, or any setback in the back, in the, in Amherst Street?
We, we don't have to have a setback from the building because it will be an addition to the building. So if, by, by virtue of that, it would have to be attached. The, the front side and rear setbacks in, in the district are, there's no setbacks.
Okay. You know, in the back of the restaurant is a storage container.
Yes.
Um, it was plopped in there when the, uh, after the building was remodeled one time, and it was hooked to the building by a doorway. And it's actually a metal shipping container and it was painted. Does that stay?
No.
Okay, that goes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in the back of these, um, in the back of Wolf Court, in the back, well, let's, let me ask you a question. I counted it out, but there's approximately, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, three hundred and fifty feet. If you walk out of the new building and you go up to the parking lot up in Cornell Street, that's, that's approximately three hundred and fifty feet if you walk that either by the sidewalk or up Wolf Court.
Um, I don't know that it's ninety, one seventy. It's about two hundred and sixty feet, yes, from Amherst to Cornell.
From the back door of where your proposed building is, up to the middle or the beginning of the parking lot on Cornell Street.
Oh, no, it's not that far. Cornell Street to Amherst Street's about two hundred and sixty feet straight across.
Okay. Um, the parking situation is, um, uh, real bad. And it's bad right now because of, um, a lot of people from the dance studio. They, there is no parking presently on Main Avenue from the restaurant down to the corner where the video store is. There is a load, loading and unloading zone in front of the restaurant. There is a Colts bus stop in front of the tattoo place, and then there's a parking so far to the corner, uh, in front of the video restaurant. All the people, every night, not during the day, illegally park all the way up that street. They park Phil Cornell Street with parking, and they fill Amherst Street with parking. And those are not people that are participating, I, I think, in, um, you know, the businesses that are there. They're, they're, they're there from the dance studio, loading and unloading people. And, um, what somebody brought up is my experiences are if people wanna drop people off or people wanna park, they're gonna park the closest place they can. And they're gonna park in Amherst Street, and they're gonna park, um, and they're, and they're gonna, they're not gonna walk up to that parking lot that's, uh, we can argue, half a block, three quarters of a block away. They're not gonna walk up there and park their car and walk down through that alley or through there. And, uh, they can walk down the sidewalk or the alley. Is that what you're saying?
The idea would be that they would walk down the, the sidewalk on Main Street because that would tie the, the project together.
Where are the exits for this new proposed building? Are they gonna be in the back and the front?
The, well, the, the restaurant exits would remain unchanged. The, uh, the pharmacy will have a, an entrance right on the corner. There'll also be-
On, on an angle, forty-five degree angle.
Yes. Um, are you talking about pedestrian access?
What's that?
Are you talking about pedestrian access?
Yes.
Yes.
So somebody gets, somebody parks or gets dropped off, they gotta go in the building. How are they getting in the new building?
There's gonna be, and for the pharmacy itself, there'll be an entrance in the back, or in, in the corner on the, on the angle. About midway along the building on Amherst is a, a, a common, uh, entrance with, there'll be an elevator and a corridor there for an entrance. And then in the rear by the parking, there'll be a third entrance that will connect all the uses inside.
Uh, you know, the two apartments upstairs, I don't think there's anybody been living, have, living in them now or has been living in those apartments.
Over the restaurant?
That's correct. They have been empty for some time, but they're, I understand they're very nice apartments, but they haven't been-
We have to try to keep it. Is that, is this part of, does that have any relevance on it if the apartments are empty?
I'm sorry.
Does that have any relevance if the apartments are empty? Does, does that have any relevance in this, i- if the apartments are empty? That's what I'm asking.
Um, there's nobody in them now.
No, I'm asking the point of that. That's what I'm trying to-
Well, the point of the matter is, is that they, that they plan to rent them? Is that what they're saying?
I, I don't know what the developer will do, but we have included those two apartments in our parking calculation so that if they are rented, we have that one point five spots per apartment. So in our numbers, we've allowed three for the apartment, so-
And I agree with what Mrs. Newcomb said, that if you don't somehow have that parking lot up on Cornell Street chained off, roped off, marked off, that will be filled immediately with people from the dance studio who exceed that thirty-spot.
Well, yeah, that's an easy thing, just to have a no parking sign. If someone's there, you tow it away.
Right.
That's what they would have to do then, because, yeah.
I, I, I wanna just impress on the board that the dance studio is not part of our project, so I don't know where they park, and we're not providing parking for them. So I don't want you to think that they're gonna be taking away-
Which is why I suggested to have that marked blacked off.
That shouldn't even be-
And it was a good suggestion, and we're certainly going to do it.
There's, there's a lot of places you go, we'll ask you what kind of car you have and what your license plate number is so they can monitor the parking lot and make sure that you have that car. And if there's someone that is parked there that doesn't own one of those cars registered, then they'll have, you'll have to tow.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying in Wolf Court in the back, you don't plan to make any changes. You're gonna leave it open from the parking lot to the court all the way up. You're not gonna put any islands, any curbs in or any sidewalks in.
We're going to curb the, the, the line between Wolf Court and the property, and we're doing that so that cars on our property could only enter Wolf Court at a designated point, not anywhere along that opening. That just gives us a more of a safety so that we could control, so we don't have three cars all trying to pull out into the court at one time like it is now. So there will be a curb that will divide the court from our property, both behind the buildings and up by where the church is. There will be no access to Wolf Court from the church parking lot. That will be on and off Cornell. And then the, we, we do have to access Wolf Court from behind the buildings because the, the dance studio building kinda provides a, a dead-end situation. So we can pull in off Amherst, traverse parallel to Wolf Court. If there's no parking, you could turn left at the dance studio building and then go onto the court, either return to Amherst or go up to the parking lot. So that, there will be the eleven-car parking lot will have an access on Wolf Court.
I would also kindly ask the developer to maintain the plowing of Wolf Court if people are gonna walk up there, because it's very rarely plowed. So that means if it snows and you want people to walk up to this a half a block away or three quarters of a block away, that when he piles the lot or salts the lot, that he also does that section of Wolf Court. Cause it, the city is not too good at doing that, and you're never gonna be able to walk up there, and if they get there, it's days and days later after the snow in that court.
I, I, I don't know if legally, could, could you do that?
Well, I can just tell you that, that, that this, this developer certainly does do that. I, I mean-
No, no, I'm, I'm saying as long as the city's okay with it, I'm sure the developer won't have a problem. Just to know if he can plow the city's property, that's all.
Yeah, we do it pretty regularly.
They're gonna come and plow the parking lot anyway, aren't they?
The next question I'd like to ask you is, there's a severe water problem that comes down Main Avenue. All the streets from Barkmouth to Bremar to St. Anne's to Cornell, to S- Amherst, to Sloan, Watson, all go uphill. The water rushes down those streets and comes to Main Avenue. When we have heavy rains, Main Avenue floods. At the cur, church, that water comes right over the curb, cause the curb is only an inch or two high, and comes over the sidewalks on both Cornell and on both Main Avenue and floods that lot with water, even though it's grass right now. And even down farther, it comes up over the sidewalk.
What lot are you talking about, sir?
So is there gonna be curbing there or something that would keep that water in Main Avenue?
I, I would imagine in the, the size of this lot, you'll have underground water detention on a property like this.
Yes, yes. We, we have, that's part of our process, quite honestly, what we will be doing. Um, if, if we are allowed to move forward from this point, the next phase that we would have to do is, um,
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management for that parking lot and for the addition, because that was, when we were at the planning commission, um, the city engineer was telling us that that's what he would like to do, to review our design for that parking lot, so yes.
So you, you must do a stormwater review?
Yes.
That was the next question. Do you have to do a stormwater management for your back parking lot on the three buildings?
Well, we do, we do, but what's, I, I could tell you what's going to happen on those three buildings is we're actually gonna be removing cover and reverting it back to landscape.
Right now, the water dumps from that parking lot out into Amherst Street and out into Wolf Court. And if you walk down Amherst Street even today, there's huge puddles of water there in the gully.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but, uh, stormwater management and, uh,
Parking barriers.
What you're talking about.
Okay.
That's under the purview of the planning commission, which these guys have to go before to straighten those issues out. Okay, that, this zoning board can't decide anything as far as stormwater runoff.
Okay. Um, the only thing I'd conclude with is I wish there was some better alternative for parking than what exists.
We all do.
You know, if there were, you know, something closer, something more, but other than that, it's, uh, it's a, it's a good project.
We look forward to having you as a neighbor. Thank you.
The project, the, just the parking issue is the thing. I surmise you're saying there'll be lights and stuff in the back of the building?
Sure, there'll, there'll be lights, you know, for, for the, the, the tenants and the visitors to those properties. But again, neither, the, the, the building, uh, is not a twenty-four-hour, the pharmacy's not a twenty-four-hour pharmacy. None of those businesses will be open twenty-four hours, so the lighting will only coincide with business hours.
Also, it won't coincide all night or anything. Also, it won't coincide all night or anything?
The lighting will not be on all night. There'll be security lighting, you know, from that standpoint, but I'm talking about to, there will not be a brightly lit parking lot all night long with no cars in it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to give testimony? Okay, you can raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
My name is Virginia Serene. I live at 1107 Amherst Street. My property is right behind there, across the street. And most of what my questions have been answered or talked about, so I don't want to go on about all of that. I just want a clarification on where the entrances are for this. The, I was hearing...
We have an extra copy here, welcome to take it.
Because I have an old, I don't know if it was an updated one.
Okay, this is basically what's there now. Is this your property here, did you say?
My property is actually right here.
Okay.
Right there, so I'm...
So, when, what will happen is, this is, this is the same view, okay?
Right, and this is where I am.
So, this, no, you're up here, you're up here, okay, so this is Amherst. So, what will happen is, anyone coming up Amherst will turn in here. This will now be a designated driveway in and out in the back. So, they can park any of these spots here.
Can you talk to the microphone so she can hear you?
Evan, I'm sorry, we have, we're trying to create a record and this court reporter can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I think what we'll do is maybe you come around to this side and just speak a little bit more clearly so she can hear you.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, what we're going to do is, if you're coming up Amherst, there'll be a designated entrance to the parking lot right here before you hit Wolf Court. And then you'll be able to drive down this way to park either here or along the back here. And then the, this is the dance studio building right here.
Right.
So, then you would be able to turn out onto Wolf Court and your option would be to continue up Wolf Court to Cornell and come into this lot.
Okay, but, but, but the entrances to the buildings?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I thought you meant the parking.
No, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
The renderings.
Okay, just, yeah, just make it quick.
Right back here, there'll be an entrance back here to the rear from the parking lot. There'll be an entrance on Amherst.
Okay, is there going to be an entrance, is there going to be an entrance on the Main Avenue?
Yes.
There'll be, so there'll be three entrances?
Right, so this will be the Main Avenue entrance.
Okay.
You can't see it, but there's doors here that would come into the middle.
Okay.
So, you could go, this is the therapist, this is the pharmacy.
Okay.
And there'll also be one in the back.
Okay, all right. Okay, is this yours? This is yours?
We have extra...
I could take one, okay. I mean, my concern is, because where I live, that people, there aren't, the parking situation is having parking up at the church, that people aren't going to park up there. They're going to park in front of my house and they're going to use that because it's the closest spot. Because I see it all the time with any business that's there. And that, that's my main concern and that's just what I would like you to consider because, I mean...
Well, it's just like anybody else, oh, here.
Oh.
That's all right. It's just like anything, you can't forcefully make someone park.
No, I absolutely...
If it was a purposeful, yes, but they're trying to be accommodated.
But we're creating a problem. I just wish that there was something because I'm very happy with it and everything else. And that's the thing, but I do have a question and I don't know if it has anything to do with this right now. On this, it says about demolition, attachment A, physical therapy office and a pharmacy on first floor and five commercial office rental spaces on the second and third floor. So, I don't know how many employees are going to be there. But the original thing in the paper, because it's a 2.5 million project, I don't know if it's gone up or whatever, it said that it's going to be a rehabilitation center on the ground floor with the second floor marketed to be the bio science industry. So, I don't know where that's going.
It came from Jim Lockwood, I think.
Well, whoever came from, this was in the paper, right?
Yeah, the reporter.
And then it said that they're going to assemble a public-private deal with the tenants of the rehabilitation center, would be a good one, that pays employees $50,000 or more per year. The deal is similar to the one that they did in Pittston. So, I was just wondering about those, you know, what's going to happen? Because that was supposed to be a bi, you know, everybody said a bio science center or whatever.
It was always supposed to be a professional medical center and we, you know, couched it that way because of the physical therapist and the pharmacist. And we're hopeful of obtaining other professional medical tenants. But right now, our anchor tenants are the physical therapy clinic and the pharmacy.
Okay, well, that wasn't in the paper. And that's, that's going back to the middle of September. And again, I don't want to go on because you know the parking situation and I just want you to consider that. I hope that there is something that we could do, you know, for the parking. But if you're going for physical therapy, you're certainly not going to want to walk from, boy, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, from there through the alley and to go in. It just doesn't make sense. They're going to want to park on Amherst Street. That's it. Thank you. Just consider it, that's all.
Is there a reason why you're leaving the building in between all these properties while you're not trying to get this other building for more parking?
The Regnoche Dance Studio.
Oh. I was not involved in the acquisitions of the property, so I don't know.
I think it was considered for sure. I don't know if they were able to make a deal with that property owner.
My understanding was that it wasn't going to be part of it, so that's all, that's all the engineers are told.
Mr. Mansonelli, are you telling the board that you have maximized the number of parking spots that you have considering the available land? Is there any way to add any more parking spots or have you maximized?
You've maximized.
On the land that we have, it's pretty much maximized. There's no, you know, to me, the ordinance for what a space has to be with in depth and for handicap requirements and aisles and things of that nature, there's no configuration that could give us more.
Okay, so you've maximized it?
Yes.
Excuse me, if I could just say one more thing, because I noticed the plans that I had, and I don't know if they're the same, behind the new building that they're talking about, it appears that there's only one handicap parking spot, but up at the church, there's two.
Correct.
I mean, why wouldn't you put more right behind where they're going to be the parking?
We don't want to restrict those heavily, what we hope to be the most used spaces, I think.
I mean, because if they're handicapped and they're up there, I mean, it's going to be a problem for them. I'm just thinking of the people...
The building code...
Because I want it to be a success, you know?
The building code requires any parking lot that's less than 25 spots to have one.
Just one, okay.
And, and more than 25 needs two. That's why there's the two and the one. And quite honestly, if we did do that, we would wind up actually losing a parking spot
Probably, yeah.
More.
I know. I just wondered because people are, you know...
It was more advantageous to do it in that way. It meets the code and it maximizes our parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you ever think about cutting back some of the commercial space on the second floor to, to cut back on the parking?
I'm sorry, say that again?
To cut back on some of the commercial space on the second floor to ease some of the parking problems?
Well, I think the parking on the sec, or the, I'm sorry, the space on the second floor, we're needing an additional 18 spots for the development. So, our approach was that because we're providing the 30, you know, we have covered our addition, so we have additional spots that we could work at the existing shortfall.
If there are no other, no other testimony, I just move for the, oh, sorry. I'll just say now, I'd like to be, our document to be marked and admitted if there aren't any objections.
Yeah, we'll, we'll mark them.
Please raise your right hand.
Frank Cardamoni, solemn swear...
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Frank Cardamoni. I own the property at 12 on the South Main Street, corner of Amherst and South Main. And I just want to say that Mrs. Newcomb is very, very right. When she says there's no parking now and the people are parking on the street, it's a very, very big hazard. It's amazing there wasn't a bunch of people killed. My property is filled. When the dance studio has a dance rehearsal, they fill the whole, I went there, I told people, you're not allowed to park here. I have signs, no parking. 26 cars were parked on my lot. And they throw cigarette butts all over the place. One person, they were ashtray right in front of me. And threw all their cigarette butts all over the floor, all over the ground. I had to clean them up. Another lady pulled her dog out of the vehicle and pooped all over my lot. And they leave it there, they don't even pick it up. So, and I have signs, violators will be prosecuted. I have signs, no parking. And like Mrs. Newcomb said, they will not listen to that.
Why don't you just have them towed?
Huh?
Why don't you just have them towed?
Because I'm not, you know, there to see it. I'm not there. I work every night from 6 till 11 at night. I work from 7 in the morning till 1 in the afternoon and I'm not there when they're there. But I've been there in days, like when they had the dance rehearsal on Sunday and I've seen all this going on. And my concern is, these people don't have no concern toward where they park or what they do. It's amazing I don't have damage on my property because of these people parking just, like they own my parking lot.
Let me ask you a question. The dance studio, is that a nighttime operation? Is that when the park? Is that something that this new developer, since their businesses aren't going to be open at night, would consider letting the dance studio possibly do a lease with that for that park and alleviate the parking problem that they're concerned about?
I suggest that just this morning.
Some of the hours will coincide though, because some of the hours with the dance school, they start at 4 o'clock, maybe 5:00. And if you're open past 5:00, there'll be a period where they'll all be open at the same time, so I don't know if that would work.
Yeah, but you guys are affiliated with the dance studio.
Right, he's saying like maybe let them use a lot, but the dance school is open, I don't know, 4 to 9?
I don't know what their hours are.
Yeah, they're like 4 to 9-ish.
But to answer your question, absolutely, the developer would be amenable if there was a window where we can make it work or there wasn't any overlap, sure.
That's why I suggested registration, registering car license plates and such when they check into the, whatever appointment they might have. Just obviously, that only goes for the physical therapists, the right, the pharmacy people, they're in and out.
Jack, just out of curiosity, did you ever look into this dance? It seems like a lot of the problems is from this dance studio that's open with no parking.
I've never had a complaint, believe it or not. I believe it. I, but I've never had a complaint.
I've watched people back off my lot and God forbid somebody gets killed there. I do not want to be held responsible because they're on my property and they got killed on my property backing into the Main Street. The traffic goes down there 45, 50 miles an hour and there's almost accidents every day between the Sunoco Station and the South Main Amherst. It's very, very dangerous there.
Well, I think some of the answer comes from what Mr. Sweeney just said, that no one's complained about it. And now all of a sudden, it's becoming a big issue. So, I mean, if that dance studio's been operating and the congestion's been there, parked on the street illegally and parked in your lot illegally, I feel the onus falls on the people in that area to complain about it. And it's a traffic situation that should be directed to the police.
That's correct. All right, I'm just going to make a very practical comment. The reality of the situation is, and as we all know, people are going to park where they can find parking spots. And it's possible that some of the people that are parking on Mr. Cardoni's lot from the dance studio may end up pulling into this lot where the church is if there's available spots. Now, if there's available spots at the church, it means that this project doesn't need those spots because they're not being taken up. So, it may, in effect, alleviate, you know, solve itself.
And that's what I was getting at before when I said if the developer's willing to open that lot up at nighttime, when they're done using their buildings...
If we can work anything out with the appropriate license agreement, for sure.
Good, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. Can I get a copy of that, please?
Yeah. Yeah, you can mark it.
Last, just, is this your property right here? On the corner right here?
Yes.
Yep.
We have extra copies up here.
What else have we can make up?
Find out first.
Anyone else got this, or?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Gavins.
Yes.
Mrs. Newcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mottessa.
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill.
Yes. With a vote 5 to 0, has been granted.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your time.
We're going to take a five-minute break, guys. We're going to take a five-minute break, guys. Let's call the next case.
Agenda item number four, eight oh two Music Street.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So, help you God?
Yes.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
K.C. Seeshultz, eight oh two Music Street.
Okay.
Right now, the property, as I bought it, is a two-unit. It's always been a two-unit. But there's no parking plan, because it was built, you know, when they built it years ago, there was no, you know, parking ordinance. So, as far as it goes, there would be, there's nearly no, it would just be street parking for ordinance. But for that reason, it'd only be good for like a single family if you couldn't make it two units. And I bought it as, you know, two units.
Okay, and there's two kitchens, two bathrooms?
Yep, everything, yeah. The upstairs unit's two bedrooms, and the downstairs unit's one bedroom.
Okay.
There's, I have a couple pictures of properties around the area that are two units, where they have no parking on the same street. There's just street parking, and up until like two thousand twelve or thirteen, it was two units. And then, from what happened is, by consumes, the tenants that were there, they weren't paying the rent. So, the land, the owner had it condemned to get them out. And then, when it gets condemned, it's reverted back to a single. You have to prove it.
Oh, it's vacant ever since two thousand thirteen?
Thirteen or fourteen, somewhere around there.
You're, when I was there the other day, they were parked on the sidewalk. Is that how they plan to park there? Because I noticed you have no parking whatsoever.
Nobody lives there.
Well, they were parked right in front of the house on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I have a picture of it. They must be the neighbors or somebody that-
Yeah, I don't know about the-
That is a big issue.
Yeah.
Kids walking, people walking. If they got to walk out into that road, Music Street is-
There's a pretty big space in between the sidewalk, where your car, the car's not actually on the sidewalk.
Understand that, but that don't take the danger out of it, is what I'm saying.
So, after it was condemned, it went back to a one unit, right?
Well, not after condemned, after being-
Well, after, what?
After being abandoned, I would assume.
Really abandoned, yeah, but either or, it goes back to a one unit.
Yeah, when it's vacant for more than the six months, then it's presumed that the non-conforming use is abandoned, so it'll go back to the one single family.
And there's no parking, all street parking thing through one unit, right? There's no parking restrictions?
Yeah, it'd be a single family as of right now, and he's asking us to go back to a two-family. Because of the uniqueness of the property, the way the property's built, because it's built as a two, or at least, I don't know, they're built, but it had been used as a two-family before.
My question is, I thought we just went over this, like, if it's, if it's a two-unit, but it depends how it's built, then we say it goes to a two?
Well, no, if it's built as a double, okay, if it's built as a double, then each individual side is allowed one unit, okay? This is not built as a double. This is an upstairs-downstairs.
Okay.
Duplex.
But it's always been, or is that way, so it's not like I could get a time machine or something, you know what I mean? That's how it was. That's how it was, been used.
You had to notice something here when you were purchasing the property. I mean, did you not take parking into consideration?
As far as I was, the owner, previous owner, told me it wouldn't be an issue. It would just-
Is there something with like realtors that they have to actually-
We've gone through this how many times?
Yeah, because that's something that comes up a lot.
It comes up a lot.
Yeah, like, if you're a first-time home buyer or something, and you look at something, it's a two-unit, and then, surprise, it's a-
Well, there is areas of issues. There's not even a spot place. You couldn't park three cars there if you wanted.
No, I'm just saying for, from a person's place, a realtor, I would imagine you'd be able to go after them in court saying-
Probably not, because on the agreement of sale, it probably says something about what its zone is.
Did you buy it from a realtor? No, no, I bought it off the owner. But what about the other properties that are same, within like three houses that have no parking and are still-
Well, they're all grandfathered in, so that's-
Well, they changed hands. The place wasn't vacated. They're places. And this is where the issue is, like I said, number one.
Yeah, what do we do with it?
It's a terrible, it's a big danger, because I saw it on Music Street. People, if you got to walk out into that road, God forbid a child from the school around the corner has to walk out into that road.
Is there anyone here else to give testimony?
So, what options do you guys give, you know, a plan, or, you know, something that I could do as far as?
Well, we're going to make a vote. We're going to vote if you can have two units or not have two units.
I got you. I'm just saying what-
Why don't you, I don't want to get into parking, but there's a lot across the street from that house.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of parking on the side streets and other streets around.
Well, no, you can't, we can't direct parking on the street. But there's a vacant lot across the street. I don't know who owns that. It's right at the edge of the court, across the street on Music Street. Maybe you could reach out to that and see if you could even lease a few spots off them, or see if they'll let you park, have your tenants park in that area. I mean, it's an option that, I mean, that's strictly up to you if you want to do something like that.
We could continue, and you can come back next month if you could try to find parking.
And I could check, but I mean, that kind of defeats the whole, you know. As far as it goes right now, with the taxes and the sewer bills, I'm getting charged for two units of sewer. And with the taxes, everything's already going to be expensive. If I pay more money for leasing, I'm not going to really make anything. There's really no, I mean, right now, the taxes are like twenty-three, twenty-four hundred a year. By the time you get rent and all that, in sewer, you're talking three grand, and there's not really much money to be made there.
I agree with you, and I agree it's been an up-and-down apartment for at least, that I know of, at least fifty-two years. I mean, I can't speak before that, but that's how long that dates back, that it's a first and second-floor apartment, that house. And I did speak with the neighbors right on the corner of Irving and Music. And they are supportive of your project. And they even attested at that point there that it was an up-and-down apartment for as long as they've owned that house. And again, that was fifty-two years they owned that house, so.
So, I guess I'd be pleading against economic hardship, that if it can't be two units, it really, you know, it's not going to be any value to me.
Is it, did you already purchase?
Yeah, I paid for it, yeah. All the taxes and things are paid up, and would like to take good care of it and keep, you know, keep it for a long time. I'm a young guy, but-
Do you plan on living there?
Not necessarily.
Okay, I, you're right. I heard you say that before. It just came back to me, you said it, so.
I'll make a motion to vote.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattis?
Yes.
Mrs. Newcomb?
No.
Mr. Paul Matisse?
No.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes. With a vote three to two, has been granted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It would be helpful if you could try to, you know, find some parking somewhere.
Reach out to neighbors or something.
Yeah, just reach out to the neighbors and maybe get a lease. Just helps, like these guys said, you know, it's a tight area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mean your best.